All right, welcome Murmack. Tonight is August 19th, 2024. This is the meeting of the Murmack Villas District Board Commissioners. Public participation is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to MVDwater.org and downloading the agenda for the meeting. That's any meeting. It will have the web link on there. Or you can call 646-876-9923. And there's a webinar ID number that you can enter and participate by phone. So I'll call the meeting to order at 5:02. And ask that we rise to do the pledge of allegiance. Maybe somebody can lead from there in Murmack.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have four commissioners, well, three commissioners present at MVD. One can is should be showing up momentarily. I am zooming in from 4181 Glass Blowing Lane, I believe it's called, in Geneva, New York, one of the Finger Lakes. So I'm a remote by myself. And I guess we're good to go. So I guess first on the agenda is Kristen there? I can't see, but I assume she is present.
I am here.
All right, so we're going to start with the analysis of revenue and expenditures. And I just want to say if I lose internet connection or something and I can't get back on, maybe someone else should run the meeting if that happens. But so far, so good. All right, the floor is yours, Kristen.
Thank you. We did the financials through July, which is the first month of our new fiscal year. Our annual budget for this fiscal year is $6.2 million, $801,356. Right now, we are running at about 27% even month, the first month, which is 8% of the budget over in our revenue budget and a negative 4.14% in our expenses. But being the very first month, there's not a lot to talk about. I did not provide June. It had really no change from the previous month into the auditors, which will be here the first week of September, Wednesday and Thursday. So hopefully, October's moving. I will have much better numbers for you for the end of fiscal year 2024. Any questions on the summary?
Yeah, quick. I think I ask this every first year of the budget. We are now, for the most part, creating reserves, respectively accruing all the one-time expenditures, the larger ones, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the fact that we're 4% low on the expense side is not an effect of us getting hit with some kind of annual subscriptions or costs or anything like expenditures?
Those, so all of our annual learned amounts, I actually put towards prepaid
Right.
and I divvy it out monthly.
Okay, and we are doing this in January as well.
I've been doing this since I basically started, so.
Right, I guess I should ask more precisely. Oftentimes in January, that's a little bit harder, right? Because you have maybe some things that renew in January at a different price point. And you have to go through all the calculations to divvy it out on a monthly basis. So everything that should be monthly in January is in January.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I spread it out so that each month is as equal as possible.
That's good. Thank you.
In terms of guarantees for the sun's off budget, again, first month, the majority of it is timing. Going to page seven, the fund balance. Do you have all of the open difference from the auditors for the end of last year? Right now, our, excuse me, our on the side fund balance for operating is at 22 million overall as a entity, we're at 23 million with 12.5% of that in our convertible cash. The trust hadn't changed because I had not received this statement. These financials, which going to page eight. July's activity is not in there because again, I had not received the statement in time. But I have tried to update this in line with more information that gathered from doing the CIP, which we'll be discussing later. And then added on 27 years, 27 and 28, again, in line with the CIP as much as possible. We're doing the same thing we did for last year in terms of the additional GIC replacements for two, nine, seven, eight. We've budgeted them out of coming out of capital. But if we do well, we can bring them into budget like we did for 2024. Questions with? And probably get way more specific when we go to the CIP.
Kristen, I just had a few questions and maybe it's, it just might be me not being aware. But in the equipment and facilities category upcoming in 2026, it looks like there are a few things in there. I just, I wasn't sure. Maybe if they're on the CIP that we're going to be talking about later, we can answer it then. But it just looking at some of the items in here, Parker Drive tanks, booster pumping station evaluation and a new pressure pump for high service. I wasn't aware of those things being before in this list. So is that something that was added or is that something?
These are added based on going over the CIP with Ron and some of the projects he's alerted me to. In terms of they may not have stayed in 26 based on our discussion when we do go over the CIP.
Yeah, so we'll just hold off on that. I'll wait till then. All right, any other questions from anybody on this so far?
And then lastly, which is the last page of the financials, which is after page 12. There is our encumbered purchase orders for FY24 that I'm looking to encumber $24,086.56. They need basically a sign so that I can have this as record for the auditors that you approved that amount for me to encumber. So I will pass this around. If you have any questions on anything on that list, then let me know.
Yeah, this is new, right? I don't remember seeing something like this. There's a lot of information on here.
There, we do this every year. I think you may just be given vendors and dollar amounts with the O number. But this is actually straight from my spreadsheet. I keep track of the purchase of the orders. And then I also kind of what I'm open purchase orders, but need to encumber them because they're either going to inventory or capital. It's not truly part of the operating budget. But to let you know, they're still outstanding.
Don't we normally get a paper from you where we have to prove those to carry over?
That's what I need to do this, yes.
Okay.
Just basically signing the bottom of this.
Okay.
So there's no new contracts or anything on here that we're not aware of, right? These are just.
Everything was approved through for year 2024. It's just that we haven't received set item yet.
All right. Okay. Any questions on any more of that? Not, looks like we can move on. Do you have anything else, Kristen, that you wanted to?
That was it for financials.
Okay. So if there are no further questions, I guess we can move on to the waterline extension. What are we doing here?
On, should we maybe move the CIP up so we can get Kristen out of here? Since we're already talking about.
Yeah.
It's just not you.
We can go in order because there's some other financial stuff to it.
Okay.
All right. So waterline extension, I assume, I don't see Underwood here, so it must be Ron. I assume you're giving an update on that.
Yeah, it's really, this should go pretty quick. It's not a whole lot. We did apply for the SRAF funding. We did not rank. Wasn't high enough on the ranking to get to get funds. So we're actually in the process of doing a special oh, special project, special project funding through the trust funds now. We're applying for that. And then we'll have a meeting with the trust fund folks. Go that route. We're going to continue with the process they go instead of continuing with the design. If this fall, yeah. If the board approves to the add all deal that where we can get the funding needed. When we come up with the funding, we can approve the whole package at that point. But we'll at least give it work to bid, whichever whatever funding comes available. I guess that when it gets designed.
So I think we have to backpedal a little bit because not everybody watches every meeting. And we have to explain what we're talking about. You know, for the benefit of the public, right? I think it would be beneficial to do that. Plus, we have some new commissioners on board too, one new commission.
You want to take that, Ron?
I guess. So we're short on, is a gap in funding. We originally applied, we get two grants for a million and a half each. One project, we're roughly 300,000 short. And the other project, we're 500,000 short.
And those are the waterline, water mainline extensions on?
Water mainline for PFAS.
Exactly.
Also affected with PFAS that we're doing. This has nothing to do with the St. Corban project or the, they're out of the zone. It's a little bit out. Obviously, it's all been towards the consent degree area for St. Corban. So we rewarded, again, the two million and a half grants. We actually started putting numbers to it and getting into design. Again, we were, we were short. So there's a couple of options to move forward. We could either cut the project short and only fund part of the projects, go to a certain point, stop. And then as we fund, get some additional funding, move forward. Underwood did write in thought that we could do it at all in the project to keep the project moving to include the remainder of the project. So that keeps the, again, it keeps the design moving. So as we get funding or we want to fund or however that funding may come in, we can award a partial project or we can award the whole project. Again, we've put in, we're putting in an application to the trust funds, so we're going to go there next to see if we can applications separately.
Are we putting these, I forget, were we putting these out to be as two projects or one?
We have to do two broad.
Two funding sources, okay. I couldn't remember. Anyway, we talked about it.
And announcement that came out, I forget, was it over the weekend or?
Friday.
Friday, thank you. But with the state with agreement. Now, those funds are supposed to go to, I mean, to them, to disperse to the communities. Has there been, I know it's brand new, but the announcement, but of the funds, but when have they gave any direction to you guys or anybody in the sense of how they might be allocated? And if there's maybe an opportunity with these other funds to help feed, to take care of the gap?
Well, I had a discussion with Amy Russo, the PFAS administrator, and she, there's been some changes to how the money, how the rebates are going to go originally. You know, we discussed that that money was just going into a pot. Well, according to Amy, the things are changing and they're going to be looking at our communities that have already invested to give that money back. That's been nothing, formulas come out and put in place yet. There's just made these changes.
I had a conversation with with a member of that committee, right? I don't want to say any names right now. And my understanding is today was supposed to be a meeting where they discuss some of that. But I also understand that the 65 million that have been settled upon between, you know, Indiana, the state of New Hampshire and DuPont and 3M is only for municipal organizations that were damaged. So there's one big misunderstanding that people believe that the 65 million is everything that's coming out of that lawsuit. And that is not correct. The 60, correct, this is only a partial settlement for municipalities. So the, and that's specifically for New Hampshire. The 65 million is specifically a lot of for municipalities, not for the general public and private well owners. That's my understanding, at least from that conversation. And what I heard also was that metrics were supposed to be defined or at least started to be discussed today as far as any allocation formula of some sorts would determine who gets what. And in that same token, I wanted to ask, are we still keeping track of any expenditures in regards to PFAS contamination?
A whole bunch of expenses back to, just went back to 2020.
Right.
Prior to that, they, it wasn't parceled out what was two, three, nine. It's kind of lumped together. So it was a matter of Krista pulling each invoice going to. As far as the AG, five years ago, we went from 2024, we've got it. Krista's got a very handle on it. Right down to vendors and they wanted, let us know on a Friday that, but they wanted by the, not the following Monday, the next Monday. They wanted all this data, including the invoices that went with, not just the numbers. I'm just pulling the spreadsheets, all the invoices. So Krista put it all together. So there was a summary that was a summary sheet of wells. Two, nine, seven, eight were together because they were funded as part of the budget. And then four and five was separate. But then there's tabs down the bottom, which you put, there's a spreadsheet for two, two, nine, seven, eight, with all the tabs to have individual invoices. So it was a lot.
What I did is the very, is the basically a summary page of the project. And where did, where did MVD's amount start kicking in for each project? For two, three, seven and eight, and then four and five. And then under that, I have all the O and M required because of these facilities. And then each tab is ever source. It's Liberty Utility, basically all the invoices back to 2020 of everything that we've spent because of these two events. So what Amy is looking for is she has to get that all in-house with them, that they can organize it with their attorneys and get it over to the AG's office. So these are only things that are above and beyond, things like the O and M, the things that we had to pay for. Then she came back and said, what about legal fees and what about penalty check? So we sifted over that and she's got everything in. But basically, I've been under the impression we'd be able to get these documents fairly easily from legal. And that's not the case. Krista did all the legwork on this. So we found out on Friday that the Friday before, that they didn't have, they weren't going to provide that. I didn't have that available. So Monday, we scrambled. And then Monday's news said that they had settled. Not understanding, of course, because they didn't say that it wasn't the whole thing. It was just partial. I'm like, what did I do today for?
It's a gift that keeps on giving.
I will say though, without your attention to detail and organization, we would be in such a world of hurt. Because, I mean, imagine poor organization, what it would look like at this point. Where you can just magically make all this, you know where everything is. You've got so, so organized.
It has been scanned since 2020, so.
Boy, are we glad that they're doing it right?
I just, well, and we sat down a couple of weeks ago and went over all the audit stuff. Just the amount of organization and the fact that she's working in three years right now at one time on a daily basis. I'm like, Kristen, when the year changes over, I can't even write a check because I don't even know what year is. So it's just amazing how fast you can turn around, absorb an amount of information. So thank you.
On the preparation head.
It is all preparation.
So going forward with these additional funds, we need authority to submit funding applications. So we need to show that the board understands that there's a commitment here and that we're on consigned documents as we apply and get any sort of signatures that we need run consigned for. So Vice Chair?
This one's for Farmer Mason, this one's for Jordan. That's why there's two, they're exactly the same.
So to clarify, at this point, this is only an authorization to continue the bidding process and the design process.
If we, if we are awarded or.
Someone says, here's some money, Ron can be like, yes.
The board will need to accept.
Oh, and I gotta, I gotta put Vice Chair too. But are we committing to expenditures? We are, aren't we?
Well.
1.5 is here, that's part, the big part.
We're already committed to that. But the, the trust funds, if it comes in as a grant, that we're, we're would, the board would need to approve in seconds of that.
So if I may, I think the way the add all bid process is, if I understand it correctly, is that the bid's going to go out with about as much work as they think is going to cost the 1.5 million dollars. And then the alternate and the additional stuff is the contractor can bid that separately, I guess. And that's contingent on, we have to come up with some additional funds for that additional work if we want that work done. I think that's how it works.
Right, and you never have to accept the alternate. Like, you never have to do the alternate work. The contractor knows, goes into it knowing that the base bid is the work that he's guaranteed. And if we can afford the add alternate, it gets added and he's already priced it. But we don't have to do that work.
If my memory serves me, didn't we do something similar to that when we were doing the treatment plant for wells two and nine? Didn't, didn't one of the wells, wasn't that like separate? Because we didn't have the full design, that well wasn't fully permitted at the time. We were in the permitting process.
Yeah, there was an add all on the well nine, lots of piece of it. And I want to say it was the laying of the waterline to well nine.
Right. Because that wasn't even designed at the time. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to hold up the whole project waiting for, you know, 5% of the thing to get finished, the design to get finished. So I guess this would be something similar, although all of the design is going to be done, from what I understand. It's just going to be separated out what's included in the bid and the rest of it's going to be an additional. So, and you know, hopefully, again, we don't know, you know, these are all estimates that Underwood's putting together. I'm assuming they're probably working with contractors to get ballpark numbers, but I'm not sure. But hopefully, you know, if these numbers come in less than the 1.5 in a perfect world, that would be nice. So we have a little extra money we can spread out to the alternate work. But I guess we'll see where that, where that comes in. But, no, that's good. Actually, I'm encouraged to hear that information about the $65 million 3M DuPont settlement money coming in. And there's already meetings going on about that. That's, that's very encouraging. I'm happy to hear that. Because I know the whole, the way this all unfolded is, I mean, think about it. If we waited until we had the money available first from the polluters, we would just be starting on all of this. And now we've got these treatment plants in place treating the water. And the whole premise was that we were going to spend the customer's money upfront with the expectation that we would get it on the back end. So I think that is basically, hopefully, the way it's going to unfold here. So it's encouraging to hear, I appreciate. And I'm glad that Jill and Ron, if you guys were in discussion with Amy, that's great. And Wolf, your discussion as well, I appreciate that. So hopefully, that all pans out the way we, we hope it does. All right, is there anything more on that item number one, the the waterline extensions?
No, that was about it.
Okay. So no further questions on that, then we can get into the capital improvement plan? Do you want to present that, Kristen or Ron? I'm not sure who wants to take the lead on that.
Certainly tag team. So I stab at this. Not a lot, I slid a few things over. I apologize for the ones that were sent out where I actually had to put my reading glasses on and I broke out a magnifying glass as well. I actually see these things. And one of the first, artificial recharge, I mean, I slid that over to 2027. One of the other things I had, I put a note on to. Let me back up. First off, it, it pretty much, there wasn't a whole lot I did that I thought had to change. I think we, we had talked about that before, that it was pretty much set. So the other note I had for the sodium chloride reduction, I just want to put a note that it was a grant was for 80,000. I wanted to add that in for future reference.
Have two copies.
Yeah, this is just a bigger version of this without the notes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm actually.
So this is not updated in any shape or form.
This one. Thank you. So I'm reading off of the split version.
Yeah.
I need to go grab my magnifying glass again. Number six, is that one six? Treatment? Yes.
Treatment evaluation.
Treatment evaluation, I slid that over to 27 as well. And that was kind of my, I know that things were on hold and knowing that this, you know, the same as the artificial recharge was moved out to 27 as well. You know, the penalty check connection if needed right now and for the three years, if we just to kind of bumped it, I bumped that out if we need to give us some time to get some things cleaned up for our lawsuits and stuff and all of that. The next thing I did take off the
Monitoring wells.
The monitoring wells have been done. Added pilot to the polishing and for the media. So that's really been changing a whole lot. That was a note added to that line for winding two to three lanes. two to three lanes. Then I wanted to add a line in, a new line for the ever in turn. DOT Everett Turnpike Bridges, Wire Road and Moose Lake Road. Were they cost to be determined? Cause I don't know what that's gonna be yet. If there is gonna be a cost, they there may be, we just finished up. The last two, seems like um, three weeks, but it's like the last two weeks doing test pits on the highway. Locating our sleeves and identifying where we cross underneath the highway. In various locations.
I'm just kinda curious. I'm not too, I mean, I know the widening, the rubber. But I think, are they, are they gonna actually replace the the bridge over there on the exit twelve there? All of them, I'm gonna get replaced.
If it goes wide enough, they don't need to replace that. A wire road, yes, wire road and.
I think those are red listed too, so they were gone no matter what.
And doing a bunch of drainage work on on the turnpike itself and some up on and wire as well.
And you, and then you have, I know they're going out to bid early early in November.
Yeah, tha- that was part of the reason they they requested a bunch of them. So we gave, we gave them what we thought our our mains were, and then they came back with a request to get some uh, some deaths in locations. Mainly deaths and come to find out why a road was wasn't even where we thought it was. It was way off. Totally wrong on that, so it was actually within what out. Little bit defined. Firm location confirmed deaths, deaths. And we got sleeve data while we were out there. They weren't looking for that, but that would've been the next phase when they went to widen. They're gonna ask.
Think the whole ones.
Yes.
So Ron, the the number that sticks out to me here is the uh, the one oh one A Continental Boulevard, Boston Post Road widening with the D that the DOT is doing. I thought that impact to MBD was like three hundred and something thousand, but you've got this six eleven number, if I'm reading it correctly. Know what that says?
Yes.
Yes.
There more work that came out of on that or um, let that number lower originally.
They give us two invoices. They came back and said they wanted more money. And again, we may get some of the back.
We may get some back. So that was in two phases. We, it was Boston Post, we we um, had to do like a redesign there. I think we might be good on Boston Post. But then the continent, the continent of the one, so redesign as well. So that bumps that made out of the road.
And then the under turnpike, do you think will get entirely back?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully, yes.
So if that eight hundred thousand on, we're looking at the very least to get roughly three hundred thousand back.
So Priscilla Lane, we we had to give a if we had to add sleeves or add to the sleeves, we had to come up with a redesign on that as well. We did not need to add to those sleeves. That was built into the contract. Uh, test pits were built into their, the contract and when they were out there. They have not done uh, Harris out yet, test pits. So, that being said, that truck may not be needed if the sleeves are there. Or to where they should be and and hopefully it's uh, the way Priscilla was and all of it may not be needed because Priscilla was good, so. Should be something coming back on that.
So just.
God, you might, you might be wondering like, I was gonna just mention that what this is all about is that our when MBD's infrastructure is in the ground in right of ways of um, like the the DOT or the town, and those right of ways need to be worked on and moved around. We are obligated to to move our infrastructure out of their way and reestablish it outside of their, you know, somewhere else that's not gonna conflict with what they're building. And that cost burden, I think, is what's shown on here. Is that basically correct, Ron, the way of explaining?
It is, and it's depends on, so anything that happens on the turnpike. There's a cost associated. If there's any relocation on from a Moose Lake Road and Wire Road person. You know, per se, up on the the, within the uh, on the town road. That's reimbursable. And I, my understanding is okay for that, but on the turnpike itself. So this is if uh, the sleeves needs to be lengthened or anything like that, that's what we have to pay for.
We can state their contractors.
Well, I mean, we could do the construction too, but it makes sense that while they're doing the work, just to have them enter their contract, but.
Well, it answered most of it. I was just trying to figure out like, are these things that like, are these accounts eventually, or you know, is it? Like, yeah, although that was basically the question, like, why, why are we paying for for this? They're doing the work and like, how involved is the town and the earth reps when it comes to accounting all of this?
So, we're basically paying them to do work for us.
Right.
Because they're doing all the work all around instead of having our our guys with their guys and, right, it's just easier.
Yes, there was a more formula involved in it. It was the age of the pipe and all of that, so.
Okay.
A little tough to plan for these, uh, you know, you you can't project these out, you know, many years ahead. Some of these just oh, by the way, we're widening the turnpike in a few years from now and you gotta come up with this money and it's like, whoa, we're, you know, where did that come from? So it's it's burdensome. You know, on a, on a water district to have to do this, but I guess that's the way.
And we have.
Our savings accounts are very, very useful.
We have a healthy other side fund balance that allows us to front these things. Once they're done, we can then ask perhaps for the trust, our trust funds to reimburse or operate it and so forth. So a lot of people do not have that, and something like this really hurt.
Yep, okay.
Just a good memory, memory to recollect when the annual meeting came up.
And somebody asked that question.
Some, some people have an issue with the unreserved fund balance.
And we have like five, interesting, like, we have five highway processes.
Right.
So we have another one, it really street, and we have another one that a little bit further for them all. Out of the highway, state highway garage area.
Yep.
All right, so um, there's no other questions that, I think I just wanted to go back to um, when Kristen was talking about the capital reserve balance, there was a few things on there and and I think they're on the CIP. Can't really, had a hard time seeing them obviously, but um, just explain real quick. I don't wanna belay the, delay the uh, meeting any longer, but there's a few things um, I have a question on. Um, just explain what they're about, I guess. The Parker Drive Tank, there's an item in there for five hundred thousand. Is that relining or repainting, or what's, what are we doing over there?
It's a blast reco.
Okay.
That can, I mean, it's gonna be.
That's what's been sitting there for a while.
Yeah, that could be moved out. It's gonna be, it would be more than that. I think we have estimates right now. It's gonna be at least a million.
Wow.
So twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a booster pump station evaluation. Is that the Pennachuck Station?
Um, that would would have been um, most of my transport, that would have been uh.
It's a hundred thousand. I'm, again, I'm looking at the capital.
Capital reserves, that is the Belmont Booster for pumping controls.
Oh, all right, yeah, cause we haven't, we've been talking about that for a while, I think. Okay, I just didn't know which one it was. So the only other two are the, the new, there's there's an item for new pressure pump for high service and then the portable pressure pump for the high service area. And they're each at a hundred thousand. Is one just a portable and then the other one's a permanent is? Well, we got two, two boosters there. We gotta replace one or both, or what's going on there?
So that booster pump, I I had that, I was working on that on another sheet and I missed that one done. That was actually a um, that was a, a ta- uh, a uh, portable booster pump for redundancy if we ever needed it down the road of the uh, booster, our Turkey Hill Booster Station went down.
Yeah.
That can definitely be moved out. I meant to move that out. I missed that on this one.
Is that electric or combustible?
That would have been a uh, I think that was a gas.
Yeah, it it probably should be because the, or booster could go down for electrical reasons, right?
Yeah.
So.
If you got a gas one, then you don't have to carry a generator too.
It was just something that was, we never purchased it. It was something that um, well, now that we, we have the Turkey Hill Booster, it's a, it's a newer station and we have booster, you know, we have pumps and barrel, so we we technically have back up there, so it's um.
We still have that big generator, right?
We do.
So, and is that being serviced regularly? So it's ready to go?
That's still on the maintenance schedule.
It is. So in that case, we could probably get away without having a gas powered pump, right? Which is probably cheaper, just an electrical pump.
Yeah, just.
It may or not be an impact.
So the pump would go from it could go, it could go either place. It could go either at the Turkey Hill Booster and go from hydrant to hydrant, or I was thinking of another spot in town. So if there was a ever a a main lane break or something like that where high service was severed, let's say, and we needed to pump. You would go jump from hydrant to hydrant, say, over on Bean Road. You wouldn't necessarily have the room to put the large generator plus a a pump and all that, so.
Generator is kind of.
That's huge.
Every time we talk about it, we're like, well, it's not really cutting it. Anyways.
All right, well, that helps. I I just wasn't sure if they were different projects or ones I already aware of, so that, that helps. Any other questions on the CIP? Do we have to go in front of the planning board at some point in the near future?
At some point, we will um. So.
I have a few questions about it. Um, and and maybe as a side comment, I I seem to recall last time uh, in front of the planning board, there were a couple of questions that we weren't necessarily prepared for. Might be a good idea to go back and watch that meeting and make sure we're prepared for them if they come up again. But um, really a couple of questions um. So chlorine, right, which is the biggest complaint that customers have in town, specifically those closed doors. And we all, that's why, uh, because we have to make sure that the chlorine concentration at the far end of the distribution system, when the water has been in the lines for a couple of weeks. For those customers that we still have residual chlorine levels that are keeping the water sanitary. We have talked about this for years and we had talked about other chlorination solutions. Um, decentralized chlorination, right? We have never said that's possible. We also have never said it's not possible, right? But I don't see, you know, that last exercise we did with Underwood, to be honest, for me personally, was not satisfactory. I know they did what we asked them to do. But it kind of left, it kind of came back with answers, well, you know, it is what it is, and unless we do something, it's gonna stay like that. It's not bad, it's not wrong, but it's, it is what it is. We have never really continued a discussion about what can we do? Is there anything we can do, right? To to ensure that we, you know, we change the gradient a little bit, right? Either, again, is there technology available that we can reduce it at the wells because we use different types of chlorination, maybe different chemicals, whatnot? Is there a different, you know, is there an approach where we can, again, re-chlorinate somewhere down the line, further out in the field? So we can lower into chlorination levels um, at the wells? We just never had that discussions, in my opinion, satisfactorily. Is technology available at all? Or it's not available at all because there's no vendors out there. It's not as, because of, you know, uh, because of how the 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 pressure gradients go. It may not be an option for us, I don't know. But I would like to see something in the capital improvement plan that allows us to have that discussion.
Are you still seeing chlorine complaints out there?
Yeah.
Cause I don't think we're, we're not.
I thought we were tracking complaints and we really haven't had enough to even.
Well, you still see a lot of people that just gave up on the subject, so.
I also still see a lot of people that have swear to God, our waters still were pumping poison into everyone's house, so I kind of like, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the solution would be to knock on people's door, right? And then I close to the well and ask if they have a problem, right, with chlorination. But I mean, if you go somewhere along the DW highways to some of the, you know, places there that may or may not have, you know, if filtered, filters, if you drink like um, you know, a fountain soda, you're gonna taste chlorine. At my house, I don't taste it at all. Also, GSE films, it doesn't help, but still, even 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 out in the yard where I don't, it's, I don't have a chlorine smell. But if you're somewhere on the center part of town, you're gonna have a chlorine smell. And people are at times complaining about it. It's much better since you guys dialed it in, right? So uh, with all the changes that we have made there with four and five and new connections and everything, that definitely uh, there was a phase where there was an issue. But it's definitely become less. I would agree with that. So whether it's less because people were like, it is what it is, and I'm just not drinking it, I, you know, or and and or if it's really become better, I don't know.
Is there?
Looking for a study for solution?
I have no idea what I'm looking for. I'm looking for ways, what's that?
Is there an efficient way to survey MBD customers without going door to door? Right? Use, use technology or, you know, you're sending out water bills. I don't know, have you do a mailman or, you know, I pay, have somebody else pay to write the check, but sorry, even spend the money on the stamp, but you know, is there a way to just get a survey back from people and just say, hey, you know, how's it going?
Well, we have an email newsletter, letter, and we can send out a Microsoft form, right, or something like that. Three six, three sixty-five allows you to do that right now with the license we have. Whether or not that's something legal would agree with, I'm not sure. We had that discussion before when you do service, when you do surveys, you you kind of like creating expectations, right? So there's a legal had a concern before that if we do put a survey out that it may cause us to commit to something that we're, we're not prepared to commit to.
But you guys have not seen uptick in calls.
We have.
I think all the water quality, things are qualified for questions.
Yeah, cause we put in a system to track them so we can see a map, so.
So people aren't responding of the website survey that was giving us data, there's still very minimum for you to even present anything to you guys, so.
The website doesn't count for me in that regard because people don't even read up on it and first of all. The P pass or irrigation issue, right?
I guess I'm just getting at it. Well, I mean, on Facebook, you know.
It's not just Facebook. It's individuals too.
Well.
I guess then, if the individuals, you, please call the office and explain so they, they say, hey, we're keeping track of this. But please call the office, you know, so we can have the data to see where's the issues are. But I mean, yeah, I'm just saying like on Facebook, every, you know, one person has one complaint, then everybody chirps in. Is it really a complaint or are you just like, you know?
It's not just Facebook. People are reaching out to me at times. It hasn't been, it has been probably half a year that the last complaint came, complaint came in. I guess the other question is, are we ourselves taste testing our water right out of the well? And do we feel it's appropriate? If it is, tell me, and I'll, I'll be quiet, right? I'm going by what the public occasionally makes me personally aware of and not, not so through Facebook. I have never went to any of the wells and opened up the
The people that came.
The people that came to you particularly. Have you taken their information to give it to Jill?
I know, because I asked them to do that themselves, so it comes firsthand, yes.
And if they don't call.
They do at times.
Okay, that's good, but, you know, but it sounds like they just don't have enough data to. To pinpoint, if that's. I wanna help the customer, you know, you have a good product, but if we don't have all the ready, if we get all the information, it's kind of hard to. Go out in.
When we had that study of, what was it, the? The map that they actually can see how long water has been in the pipes that Underwood did or whatever, I think the longest water was in the pipes was like. Somewhere like thirty-six to seventy-two hours or something.
No, 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 it was like weeks.
I don't think it was weeks.
Yeah, no, I was surprised about that.
I'd have to go back, I I don't remember either way.
I remember that map and it had like the areas that water sits and like the ends of the lines. So I just.
I'd have to go back and look, I I know, um. While we still record our. Residuals when we flush. Before and after, and it was. Certain areas, you could almost tell where the. The higher demand was because the residuals were a lot better at certain lines than than other lines, so. There are certain. Areas that definitely turn over faster just because of. It's more use.
Well, and I think that's an important thing when we're looking at putting in new water lines to make sure we're looping lines and not doing dead ends, even if. Sometimes we have to add a little more money to the project or something like that, or investigate other funding sources, because the less dead ends we have. The better those problems are.
I mean, like, almost I have, like, a place where. Like, the water flows, comes back in through, uh, like, a bead cutting. You know, not necessarily like a carbonated another system, but something where you come in and then.
Right, the more neighborhoods you can put as full loops back into the system, you don't end up with those dead ends. And the water that's stagnant and that for longer periods of time.
But it would be something. Perfect state, but like, almost like, another, like, another kind of substation where the water can come in and then you make you. You know, maybe get, uh. Like, almost like a refresh of treatment, the sense. So it was kind of the question, right, but only, of course, if we need to do that, right, we don't want to do it if we don't have to do. I would be curious to do a taste test at the wells, where the water goes into the system, and at the tank, and, you know, get everybody's opinion on that. It can be something you guys can do and tell us, right, or we do it.
But I know, um, if I can try lots of Brian, I I know we we're always doing. Residuals and everything else at the sta- at the station, so they're. Checking chemistry all the time. I drink the water. That's all I drink is tap water, I don't. Let me rephrase that, I do buy bottled water occasionally.
I thought you were talking about beer or something.
I do drink tap water and I don't.
All right, I'll let it slide, but it is something that hasn't really been resolved, in my opinion, um. I don't think you should let it slide, I just think that we need to get more. I just think if people are having concern, we just need to have them really reach out so we can. Better. Address the issue.
Right, I think before we put a hundred thousand dollars somewhere on the line on the CIP. Know anymore.
I mean, I can put it under the treatment improvements with, uh. What does this project need?
Sure, yeah.
So that it's kind of on there.
Because in the same token, I s- and that's something I still see frequently and hear frequently, I even have it at my house, and I have a filter. Um, is, um, sediments, right, um, and 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 I'm I'm assuming that's iron manganese in the end, right? When I see sediments, that's misleading, right, I'm I'm saying, you know, you're gone for a week, right, on vacation, and you come back and you have. You know, a black mark and it's one of the bowl or something like that, I know that's one of the things that several of my neighbors. Use as an indication that our water is not high quality, right? Now, we know, and I keep telling him that, that in the end, it's not, nothing that's not sanity or sanitary, but people don't like to see black stuff in their water. Even if it's in the toilet, uh, bowl, so, um. I do know that seven and eight, of course, is filtered, right, but I also know we talked at one point about, um. I think four and five, right, are higher than two and three as far as iron manganese, correct?
I believe, I believe so, I have to.
Right, so, and I I just looked at the charts twenty minutes ago, it doesn't look like it's. Anywhere near what the thresholds are, right, what the contamination, uh, perimeter contamination levels are. I don't think it's MCLs, right, so it's more like advisory levels than anything.
So they're they're down enough to sequester rather. You know, obviously, you know, seven and eight were high enough that it needed filter.
Yeah, so I don't know, I I don't know what to do with that, I know we talked about it at one point, but it didn't really go anywhere, right, um. Cause we also have the issue that we potentially have to polish four and five for short chains, and that's a higher priority, right, so. But maybe again, but maybe as a as as a discussion, you know, as as an idea for for further discussion down the road, but, uh. Right. Iron manganese might be something we want to look at at one point, right?
I mean, Ron, maybe you can reach out to, uh, Underwood, I don't remember who who authored that specific report, but I remember what Wolf was talking about. And, um, you know, it might be just a s- a small amount of money to have them. Kind of go into a little bit more detail on that part of the report where. I believe they they discussed it and then they dismissed it, and I think we just need to bring that back. And maybe that'll prompt more specific questions on our part at some point is to just have them come back and and discuss. Kind of go over it again of what they said in the report, wha- what what information they would that they use to base that. You know, discussion on and bring it back to us and talk about it, and we can ask them again and say, is there something else that we can do? Um, as far as the complaints, I I definitely think personally, I haven't heard anybody call me personally on that, or I haven't really seen. As many as we used to in the past. I do know that now that we have all of our carbon, uh, filters online. Will remove any kind of organics and to some extent some minerals. And the organics and the minerals is what reacts with the chlorine, so I think. It consumes the chlorine, so by having those filtered out, I think there's less consumption of the chlorine in the system. So maybe that's why if we if we turn down the chlorination at the wells. Maybe we're still getting, you know, the same amount of chlorination as we were in the past at the end of the line, but we're starting with less chlorine. Cause there's less consumption of the chlorine going on, which is a good thing. I'm only trying to say, I think it's important if if people have issues. To call the MBD, cause I believe we're tracking these now, so we have been for a while, so that would, that's good information to build a database. And then somebody mentioned about putting it on the bills or something. And I, I'm gonna bring this up later, but I did have a question about that cancer survey in the past about putting a. Just a a web link on there, it's literally a thirty character string of information. Either in the email that transmits the bill or on the bill itself, there's a place right on the bill. That actually asks, uh, or talks about. Water quality inquiries, it's on the bill right here, right now. Water quality inquiries with a question mark, call six oh three four two four, you know, the number. So it's there, or email customerservice@mdwater.org. So it's on the bill, right at the bottom over here. So if people are getting those bills like I got them. They can just go and call MBD, I mean, I don't know, we're already, we're already asking them to call us with water quality questions. Just they don't want to, so if if they don't want to bother with it, then in my mind, maybe it's not. A big enough deal to them, if it was a big enough deal, you know, so maybe that's the answer, is is mention that you get a water bill every month, it's right on the bill. To ask about, you know, calling up the MBD if they have questions about water quality. So, I mean, I I I don't know that there's a, you know, significant problem unless we start seeing. More significant questions on it from our customers. And I know maybe you see more, uh, through other avenues than other people do. Um, but I I guess, you know, it's unfortunate that they don't want to continue to elevate it to, uh, to the MBD office, you know, cause that's. That's the way it's gonna get tracked, you know, that's how it's gonna get tracked and.
Some have, but maybe we really start with the taste test at our own wells, right, and at the tanks, and see where it goes.
I'll I'll pull up that report. I'll start there and and I'm curious on the age of the, well, I I just don't remember where.
I I know a couple of months, a couple, maybe a year or two ago, you guys said it's up to six weeks old on the far end, I remember that, I could be wrong. But I know it wasn't six days.
In the summertime, the the Turkey Hill. A high service tank, that thing is up and down.
Right, no, we're talking on the far end of the distribution.
No, I know, but it it's just the amount that. I've seen the the regular pressure zone, that takes a little bit to fill, but I mean, we're just. We really fly through water, so I, it just seemed like we'd sit that long, weeks in the main, but.
I just remember the map.
I'm leaning on hours, but.
I I wanna say it was like thirty-six hours or something and. That's what that, I I could be wrong.
I I don't know, I'd have to, I have to bring it up.
One more, and and just to bring this to an end, um. Mitchell Woods and artificial recharge, we're still planning for both. We know we're probably not gonna do both, in fact, I believe we had a discussion where the board has. Shown lack of interest in Mitchell Woods at this point, because of the the high cost of. Getting that well productive, even though it's a nice well to polish. Um, the the peaks, right, and and to, uh, because it's very clean. But I thought before, maybe about eight months ago or something, we had a discussion, uh. Um, as part of a work session where we kind of said, we have to put an end to this, cause we keep pumping money into it with more surveys. We just re-permitted it last fall or something like that, right, so. At one point, we need to come to an end with the whole artificial recharge and 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 Mitchell Woods, right, so. And we haven't had a work session in a while to bring this to an end. Where do we, where do we stand with that, and and how do we bring this to an end?
I thought we were waiting.
I think we're, once we get back on track with our, uh, uh, well, six. Once we start looking, you know, our different other options, we we may be back to.
Right, I think, I thought we were holding on the whole thing because we were waiting to see how that flushed out. Um, no pun intended, and then, um, we were gonna go and revisit everything when we could go back to everything after the conclusion. Of our other business, but we didn't want to take them all away because, and Mitchell Woods wasn't real, like, it didn't have the volume we wanted for the money to put into it. But it's still a source, it's still permitted, it's still there, so we kind of just, we're gonna let it lie until we could. Collect more information and go back again.
Okay.
I thought that's how it ended, that was my recollection.
Yeah, I was under the impression that we had said we wanna start putting into that, okay. The only reason why I'm saying that is because we have the cost on here and it affects our rate study, right, and I don't wanna over. Over project our costs in terms of the rate study, uh, in the number of years. It's gonna be the one or the other, right, it's probably not gonna be both, we're either gonna do Mitchell Woods or.
Rate study.
The CIP factor is factored into the rate study. From what I remember.
I thought we also agreed we weren't gonna do a rate study this year.
We have it for every two years, we'll write in next year's budget.
I could be wrong, I thought the contributions into the capital, the CIP is in the, is is factored into.
Potential loans are. So it's a matter of, to your point, if. We truly are gonna hold off, then we may wanna push instead of twenty twenty-six or twenty-seven. Truly pushing it out until we get, or so there can be in on the well six.
As long as we do it before the next rate study, we should be okay, right, but I just want to remind ourselves that I think we have some redundant costs on here. That probably not both is gonna, gonna come to fruition, what about a, to be determined?
We can do that too. Cause that seven point one million was, I think, on here four years ago, I'm sure it's not that price now. It's an idea, but.
I feel like that's a lot of these numbers, so you just throw a hundred thousand at it or a couple million here and we just. We free them.
We could discuss that later.
Okay, and I'll be quiet now.
I had two questions, though, um. So on this, so I'm noticing, you know, basically, the numbers for next year, twenty-six, twenty-seven are. Huge, right, and then it kind of settles out, is that because this kind of slides out, and and you push things, we talk about them?
So, correct, so all the ones we've pushed out, those numbers will shift. The totals.
Right, but they're gonna shift to like twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
Correct.
Okay.
Or however.
All right, so we'll obviously get the updated copy of that, but. Um, is there like a a big plan? You know, cause if we're going to two point six million to almost ten million in twenty twenty-six.
Well, seven of that is what.
Well, recharge.
The artificial recharge, which may or may not happen, so we can push that out.
Okay. So that goes to my next question, which is the PB column. Are we gonna use that? It looks like that might help with, you know, prioritization and push out, I mean, you've got the legend down here in this yellow box, so I.
That's what the planning board does.
The planning board.
Planning board takes these projects and they rank them in what they feel is the order of importance. And they do that for our CIP and for the town CIP, then they give it back to us. And that's supposed to guide us going forward.
Which is funny, because it's a two different legal entity.
Yeah, this is the planning board knows, like, when stuff needs to happen from a water perspective?
This is basically just a suggestion on how the process works, it really doesn't do anything for either the town or ourselves.
Gotcha.
They like to see this, because it also ties in with their projects, if they're doing something, they know.
That makes sense.
Right, that's, um. The way we do a CIP and the way the town does a CIP is completely different, we will put. Um, like, equipment and stuff on there, they do not, they only put big projects on there, so wait, you'll, if you watch the planning board meeting when they go over this. They will basically say they don't understand why they have to do this, because our CIP has little things on it and they don't really care about that stuff. So it's just the, the way government runs, I feel, and the way the system is set up, it's not. Efficient that everybody plays on the same ballpark, like.
But some of these, like, equipment, those are big costs for us, so we need to keep them on our capital.
That's a great comment, though, why don't we put put another, uh, column in here that literally says, P I, you know, planning board, uh. Applicable or not and flag it or not, and then you guys use a filter and collapse that thing to fifteen, twenty lines. Instead of having all the vehicles and anything, anything on there that really.
Yeah, and the town CIP that I was looking at this week for another board, um, they have like major project CIP, and then they have like. Smaller projects kind of CIP, and then the planning board only goes through the major projects, they actually have like two pages on their spreadsheets. So I don't know if that's something to, um, endeavor in the future, but, I mean, I think us having all of our detail for us. Makes a lot of sense, cause we wanna know, like, when trucks are gonna come out and have, make sure that we're planning out. Stuff, because even though you see like the numbers from like twenty-eight, they start going down, like, we don't have that much planned. As we move through those years, we fill them in, you know, as, you know, hey, we're gonna need two trucks next year, you know, we just. I don't think we're at a plant where we're gonna plan trucks out six or eight years from now, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
So, but are we providing any input to the planning board as far as like what we feel is urgent or. Necessary, desirable, deferable?
As we're, we were.
They don't present it.
Presenting.
Okay.
I can put that together and very easily. Got the trucks and.
Up to you.
It's also helpful, cause we pay for our trucks, I got capital reserves and stuff, and a lot of times they're. Getting loans or having to put them in their operating budget, and we don't have to do that. Then they ask us why we have so much money in our capital reserve fund, because we. Yeah, we plan for things in advance.
Uh, the only one comment I'd make is, I think it'd make.
Uh, the only one comment I'd make is I think it'd make, um, being able to refer to different lines in the CIP. If the, if we added a first column all the way on the left, which is. One to, you know, forty, however many lines are there, so someone can say. Hey, what's up with line thirty two, or what, what's, what's this on line sixteen? Cause it's a little hard to pick. It took, you know. You want to talk about. It's harder to to re- reference without having a line item, I think.
Quick comment, there's some formatting issues and indentation issues and some typos. Before we go to the planning board, I would like to see those.
All right, any other questions or any, anything more to discuss on the CIP? Uh, if not, then I think we can, uh, move on to the next item. Uh, which is to discuss the number three request for reimbursement letter to Evoqua. Uh, I know that was in our packet. I had a few, um, just edits run. I think what I'll do is I'll probably just take a picture and email you. Just a few word edits to make it sound a little smoother, but. Um, essentially, I think what we're doing is at this point, we're going to Evoqua who supplied us the GAC. That had iron in it, the raw GAC product that we put in our vessel at seven and eight. And ended up, uh, having to flush that media for quite a while before we could put it online. And, you know, spent a lot of money and time and chemicals and whatnot, so. We'll see if they're gonna be willing to make good on anything. Uh, and I, I think that's the intent of this letter is just to tell them where. What happened, how we were, you know, spent all this money, you know, if they can do something to, uh, credit us. Uh, back some of that cost that we incurred. And where it goes from there is to be, is to be seen, but at this point, I think that's what we're talking about doing. Is there anything more you wanted to add to that, Ron, or anything I didn't?
No, not, I mean, other than, uh, Brian, I did give, uh, our various manager a, a copy, he's kind of going through it as well. To see if anything that was missed.
And a field book.
Yeah, he's, he was, he was out there, you know, boots on the ground type of, type of thing, so. Right. But. Which I originally got a lot of, you know, from, from him in the first place, but, uh, so this, it could be some changes. Come from that, but, uh. This is really just the first draft, so I'm now, I can circle it something else out. Obviously, before I send it out, something out to Evoqua anyway, so whatever you have done, I can incorporate in and. Everybody else has. Get it back out to the board before it goes out.
Did you get, uh, Legos of, uh, opinion on it too?
Yeah.
Oh, that kick, oh, yeah. Did we have to buy water during that period? It's not listed here, that's why I'm asking. Because we have eleven weeks delay. We have eleven weeks delay in getting that well online. For the distribution system. Getting your, at that point, then like ten truck came to us. Oh, that's the question.
A lot of hundred, I'd have to, I'll get back to.
So I think that would be an important question to ask.
I don't think we did, but I.
Well, it, it's, it looked like we went online, April, what is it, twenty eight? April twenty eight, so it's before the big surge in. Usage, right? And that was a rainy. That was twenty twenty two? No, twenty twenty three was the rainy year, so that was.
Last year. So that was four. That was four, yeah.
Cause I, cause I never, I never, we got the special rate. From Pennachuck. It's, but, you know, wasn't that that timeframe?
I think it was before the contract we have now, though.
Actually, let's look, because no, we would have, we would have been on Pennachuck in four or five. We're waiting for.
These are the timeframes?
Yeah, because we were waiting to seven, eight, come online.
Okay, just, everyone, uh, like, uh, Pennachuck came, came here and this, you know, expressed their concerns with their customers, they had the effort. But the water, and that's how we were able to, with the, we started purchasing and starting in the water. That was later, though, I think that was fall, wasn't it?
It was, but it was through the.
I just remember seven, eight wasn't working.
A lot of sugar winner.
That's why it's kind of tying it together.
Summer. We'll, we'll look on the eighth, because it was.
Well, the original.
Right, the original special.
Cause that would have been a pretty serious impact on us then, right? That, that was not cheap that time, that we had to buy water. That was before the emergency rate and.
You know, we may have been, but I don't know. We would still have been under that contract of purchasing it. As we're coming into summer anyways, but we would have had seven, eight behind us. But we may have purchased less, but.
Thank you.
All right, good to move on. Any other questions on that one? If, if you can, uh, bring that letter back to us at some point, just to see it in its edited form, that would be good. And I'll get you my, um, edits to it as well. All right, seeing none, I guess we'll move on to, uh, the minutes, I believe, are next. Um, and it looks like we have, uh. July fifteen, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. We have five pages of those. Uh, anybody have any corrections to offer on those? Um, the only thing I want to change on page four, line forty. Is it says, um. References the cancer study. I think it's more appropriate, and I can't remember what the word was used, but I think it's a, it's a survey. So I think a study is not really what, what it is. It was a cancer survey that we were talking about there. So if you want to just change the word study to survey, I think that would be more accurate. And, um. I'm not bringing this up for an edit, but I just wanted to point out that line two on page five. It does talk about clarification provided. Uh, and explain that a link to the DHHS survey cannot be added. And only minimal communication can be made. We were talking about adding this to the billing. The billing that goes out to the individual, um, customers, the paper billing. I know we were talking about a separate mailer to, to add in the, in the billing and all that stuff, but. Uh, I did ask the question about if a link can be put on the bill and the, it's, here says the answer was no. So that, that just kind of goes back to where I was, uh, talking about. You know, the, the customer complaints for water quality and things. If that line can be changed to put a thirty character string. Of a, um, a web link in there that you don't click on it, but you'd have to type it in your computer to go to that link. If, 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 it's, it was told to me that the bills, the way they're written cannot be changed. There's no web link that can be added to that, and I, I just, I know Amy's gonna look into that deeper. I, I just find that hard to believe, so. Uh, I just wanted to point that out. But anyways, back to the minutes here, is, does anybody have any corrections? If not, we can entertain a motion to approve. As amended.
Make a motion, oh, do you have changes? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July fifteenth. The public meeting minutes of August seventh and the non-public meeting minutes of August seventh as amended.
Second it.
All right. There's no other corrections, then we'll, uh, just take a vote on that. All those in favor of approving those minutes. As amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that's, uh, myself included, uh, so that's five zero zero. Those cover all the minutes, right? I know there was one that was added today or something, Jill, but I think I had this in my copy already, so.
Yeah, it was just something, it was a public session that went, then we went into non-public and back into public, back, back into non-public, but all the publics were on one.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it's pretty basic.
All right, and then, uh, the last, the other thing we wanted to look at here are the, um. The action items. So if everybody's got a copy of that, we'll just start from the first one, I think, um. And, and Dawn, this is where we have you make the, um, changes for the next. Meeting for the action items here, so if you want to follow along as we talk about this. Item number two. Uh, the last column says July, but I believe that's past. Did we talk about this?
We did, and we had the ESRs and then went out last meeting packet in July, so it should have just been blocked out to October.
Right, okay, so Dawn, just change that last column for item number two to October.
Got it.
Uh, and it, uh, looks like we do have the PFAS sample points in the distribution system in our. That we just emailed out, I think, today, right? So we have that. So that, that was done in August, we're doing.
We're gonna be talking about that during the superintendent's report or something?
We can talk about, now, I, I wasn't.
Okay. Seven twenty three, right? We had. Some breakthrough, I think. Into the, into the finished water, right?
Yeah.
Um, where do we start with that?
A lot of that was. All of it is Pennachuck. We had the Pennachuck connect open. So.
Convenient.
It's closed now. We had it open for a short time. For seven and eight, we're, we're down with the, the pump issue.
I have a site that we went to, and it's on the last page, it's the Enterprise over there, you want to see what's in. A difference. A different from the Pennachuck booster.
So basically that Pennachuck booster, boost the page is basically. Pennachuck water.
That's right out of the.
That's right, and out of the. So none of that is any Meramec.
Nope.
Water at all.
Nope.
It is water that comes into the Meramec distribution system.
Yes.
Okay, and it's going from there to, to, to the Turkey Hill tank, or?
It's just going in.
Yeah, distribution. It goes into distribution system from that point and it couldn't.
Right, so.
Flains out, it could get picked up by the. Turkey Booster, it could go into the high service. It, it gets blended out, it can go in.
Can we write a letter to Pennachuck?
Well, actually, on this, now that you, now we're talking about this, is, uh, you'll notice the, the PFOA is four point zero four, which is. It's compliant now, but the EPA limit of four that's gonna hit, I don't know, twenty twenty nine or whatever that sets in. You know, there, that, this tells me they're gonna have to do some more treatment because they're not meeting that for. Uh, MCL right now, where if it's coming through to us at four point oh four. It's basically at the MCL, so I don't know if that's gonna be acceptable to be left that way, but. You kind of see these numbers carry through if you think that's coming in on the south side of the si- site, uh, of the distribution system. Um, you see on Continental Boulevard, which is on the south of town, I think there's some numbers there. That are detectable there, right? I think there was PFOA in there, it was. It was low, it was below the limit, but it was detectable. Um, yeah, point seven oh six for Continental Boulevard, so. That is not coming through from MBD water. Um, there's some short chains, though, up in Society Hill, the FDA. You know, I, I think we had a little breakthrough at Wells four and five, if I'm not mistaken, so that could be. From Wells four and five, they're, they're very low numbers, but again. You know, that's, that's, that's part of the routine here of changing out the, the filters. Either at first breakthrough or after eight months. Uh, and that's after the lead vessel I'm talking about, so that was the issue with the lag vessel. Having been overloaded when it was the lead vessel and then it becomes the lag vessel. Is probably what's causing that to happen. Or the other vice versa, I guess, is what happens is it bleeds through the first one and gets, contaminates the second one, then it becomes the lead that bleeds through right away. So anyways, I know you're trying to advance that, Ron, and I, I think that's a good idea, and these numbers kind of validate why you're doing that, right? But yeah, other than that, I think a lot of these numbers, even the short chains and everything. You, you can see Pennachuck booster has one, two, three, four, five, six. Uh, six short chains besides the two PFOA and PFOS, so. I, I think those are coming in. And that's what's gonna happen in the middle of the summer when we have to turn the booster on to get the water that we need. Uh, so this is not a surprise. And it's good, hopefully, you know, we're at the point of the year now where, where we, if we don't get into any dry weather, if we get rain coming. We don't have to turn that booster on and, and we can go back to nice, clean drinking water. Uh, and, and non-detect of all PFAS, once we change out Wells four and five and catch that up too. So I just wanted to point that out, because I was looking at these numbers a little bit this afternoon, and that's kind of the conclusions that I came up with on this. So since. Has any, uh, discussions, go ahead.
Well, since the one, uh. Concentration is gonna be above federal F, uh, MCL. Would it be prudent to reach out to Pennchuck and ask what their plan is ahead of time?
I can certainly do that.
We've got these results, the last time we had any trace, um, a, that person over there, because, and I'm in contact, and I just didn't get a chance to talk to him.
With the board.
Time that happened, there was close to change out.
The board agree that we should ask that practically before it's non-compliant?
I think it's a good question, yeah.
The question would be, since we saw these. You know, over the threshold that's gonna be coming in here soon, we would like to have, uh, an outlook from them. What their plan is to maintain compliance.
And I believe it's gonna be a more frequent change out, but I, but I can verify that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, now that you say that, Ron, I think I remember Keith mentioning that when we spoke about this several months ago too. Cause I was under the impression they were going to add treatment. And it was either Keith or Pete or somebody said, from Underwood, said that, um. They think the plan is to just change their media more frequently to, to keep up with it, so. It'd be good to know, that's, you know, it's been, was several, it was probably six months ago, so it'd be good to know. Now that the MCLs are approved, they haven't kicked in yet from the EPA, it'd be good to know. What their plan is, if that's, if that is in fact their plan, to just go frequently on the change out. Which is kind of parallel with what we're doing right now a- as well, for the, for the time being anyways.
All right.
Okay, um, any other questions on that one? That was, uh, number twenty three, so back to the, uh. Action items, we want to move on. Uh, the next one that was due September was, uh, the updated mineral graphs, which are in the packet. The only thing I would say on that is that we got some elevated sodium and chloride. I know those are probably the mineral, I'm not sure if they're. That's what we're talking about with these graphs, or if it's just, uh, iron and manganese, but. Uh, well, seven and eight look like they're on an uptrend again, which is unfortunate, so I think. That led me to suggest that we're probably gonna need to upgrade our efforts on salt mitigation. Over in that watershed as well, because those, those, those are trending up quite a bit again, unfortunately. I don't know if anybody else has any, uh, comments to make on any of that, or, um, can move on to the next item. Next one in August is, uh, number sixty seven. About moving the no salt sign closer to exit ten. I know we were waiting to hear. On that letter that we were having all the town department sign and get off to the DOT. So I don't know if anybody's got an update on that. I think Aaron saw a, uh, letter that the, the school board sent to the DOT.
Yeah, so they had their meeting, they reviewed the letter that the, um, attorney drafted, made some changes to it. The person that was making the changes to it, um. Was away Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, so she's supposed to be. Was away Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, so she's supposed to be getting, uh, letting me know when that's done this week, and I'll go over and pick up. That to send along with our DOT letter.
Okay, good. Uh, alright, so then moving on to um. And up, number seventy-nine, update on the water extension status, I think we covered that already in one of the agenda items. So, so yeah, I want to go back, I'm sorry, you want to go back and, I forgot to mention that uh, number, number twenty-three. We should be changing that last date in the last column. Since that's quarterly, three months from August is uh, September, October, November. So change number twenty-three to November. Um, same thing with number fifty-eight, because that'll be the next quarterly report on that. And as far as number sixty-seven, let's just change that to September, we'll report back if we got any progress on that. Uh, the waterline extensions monthly, so we can leave that there. Number eighty-five, uh, keep commissioners updated on financial accounting software. Do you have anything?
No change.
Go over on that one, okay?
No changes.
Any questions anybody has on that, number eighty-five for Kristen at this point? Alright, if not, uh, number eighty-six, the employee handbook, I think we already covered that.
You, you've approved it in, in our work session, so that can actually be come off.
Right, so um, I think the way that um, this is handled on these is that line item eighty-six. I don't think we actually delete it, I think we just hide it. Look at it at a date, in a future date, we can do that. Um, the next item is eighty-eight, which is due to be reported in August, and that's uh. PFAS filtration media alternative vendor plan, I don't know if you have any updates for us, Ron, on that one?
Not really on the plan, I just, I do have um. So the media change out is scheduled for the twenty. Fourth, uh, September twenty-fourth at two and nine. And I just confirmed today what we're gonna do, it is on the return. That meeting is gonna return the October eighth. They're gonna, so it's gonna go back into two and nine, and then we're gonna go over to four and five and do the exchange at four and five.
Yeah, which one's first?
Nine.
Uh, two and nine.
Okay.
Two and nine was September, and then seven and eight was due in October. And I'm flopping those two because we're getting breakthrough at.
Four and five. Yeah. Okay, any questions on that from anybody? Alright, seeing none, number ninety, I don't know if we're um, getting anywhere on the solar power options.
Sorry, we spoke with you, and um, they're, they're just in need of some invoices from us forever source. And they're gonna, you know, give us options and discussions, and that we also touched with a deadline to. Access.
Well, yeah, so uh, I forgot to go back to eighty-eight, um, so if those are. That was quarterly, I guess, then um. Says discuss quarterly, number eighty-eight. So if we're gonna do that, I guess we want to bump out the date from August to November. And then the solar power probably goes out to November as well, number ninety.
Dawn, can we go back to, I apologize, I. I always get messed up on that, and I forgot that's the, that is the. And I did get. Some word, uh, word from uh, they're still working on the, the protocol. They finalized the protocol, so we can get everyone. Agreement on it, and uh. Basically, they're still working on it, they're just uh. Hopefully, it's gonna be soon.
Whi- which number are you talking about, Ron?
Uh, eighty-eight, I'm sorry, eighty-eight?
Yep, yep.
Yes, so uh.
Pilot testing.
The pilot testing and the email from, it was an email from Lynette, geez. To Frank was, he's the one that's gonna be doing the. Pilot, taking the samples, and she says, we're almost there, high five, we're almost there, work on finalizing protocols, so we can get everyone's agreement on it. You can help us out if you can check the following information and fill in the blanks, and then she sent us some, some uh, stuff to check off. Then the answer, we want to take a, a site visit prior to, so. Still, still there, I thought we were a lot closer, but um. Hopefully soon.
Okay. Um, I think, I mean, I'd like that one to be discussed more frequently than quarterly, I guess.
Agree.
Same way. Why don't we do that, I think, you know, once we get it going, it might not have any data for a few months, but at least to know that it's running and whatnot. Uh, so number eighty-eight, let's just change that last column to, to just say monthly instead. Uh, number ninety, I think we already said we're gonna bump that out to November. Uh, number ninety-two, update website for salt use reduction alternatives. I know that's kind of a challenging thing as far as information being somewhat limited out there. Um, so I don't think we've done anything different on the website that I'm aware of. Uh, but this is something that we could probably bring up at our next salt reduction committee meeting. And I know we brought it up there before. But if we can bring that up again and see if anybody has any other ideas that we can add, I know it's tricky, we don't want to necessarily call out. Specific vendors and products, but. Um, a lot of our customers are asking questions about what they can use instead of salt, and I'd like to be able to point them in some kind of direction. Uh, so let's change, let's change number ninety-two to November, anybody have anything else to offer on that, on the salt reduction alternatives? Alright, uh, seeing none, um, number ninety-four. Uh, I think we talked about that today. So uh, that's still kind of ongoing, why don't we just set that one for September, number ninety-four? And then the number ninety-five is a monthly update on uh, waterline extensions with uh, St. Obane, and um. I think, Ron, you typically cover that, you want to cover that anywhere?
I do now, um. Now, they've been, they've been working on, uh, actively working on the uh, services, right? Actually, it's a. WSP, it's a, they. West, West Construction.
S U R West? Yes. S U R West?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Um, they've been running like three crews around town doing uh, different services, so. Pearson, Joppa. Yes. Some of the strag, uh, single. Services, um, they have not started the mainline extensions yet. Uh, I don't know when those are gonna take place, that, they still need to do a uh. A uh, pre-con meeting for that, so I have not been notified of that yet, so. If services going well, they, that's a pretty decent crew. It's, uh, doing a nice job, so.
So this is providing new service?
Yes, so, within the um.
Within a consent.
Thank you, I just want to go on the confined area.
So the line, so you said St. Obane, that's what that's GPP is?
Yes.
Is that funded by St. Obane?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so can I go back to the one on uh, seventy-nine? With the water, waterline extension status, so that's worked out, we're doing? Gotcha, okay, and just high level, how long does it take to, for the payback on that, because I know like, you know, those, like Palmieri and Gerard, there's like nine houses. Something like that, what's the? Yeah. Are we just doing it because, or is there? Okay, okay. Alright, well.
That comes in money.
Gotcha.
So far.
It was supposed to be all grant funded, and then it turned out that what we thought we could build for one point five million turned out. Not to be the case, it's over.
Well, that's the same letter, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't get, I didn't have the connection, so.
Yeah.
Got it.
So that's why we're trying to look for funding, because the payback period, well, why we're doing this, it's, it's definitely doing it to. Have people get rid of their contaminated wells and get on MBD system now that we've got nice, clean PFAS-free typically water. So that, yeah, we, we'd like to get grant opportunities for that to cover that.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, I used to live on Gerard, that's why it stood out to me, and.
Okay.
Glad somebody's gonna get clean water then.
There's a, there's a bunch of wells on Farmer and Mason too, I think that the number of wells are a lot more that are contaminated over there.
Yep.
We were looking at it a few months ago, and I, I want to say it was in the high mid-nineties percent of all the wells out there. On those properties exceeded the um, the threshold, and that's the state's threshold. Uh, and even worse, you know, for EPA's threshold is, it's even higher, because it's a lower number that you have to exceed, so. There, there's a big bang for the buck out that way, and that's where the cost overrun is, so. We, we're trying to really figure out a way we can get all those customers served instead of having to cut a few off. Um, so that's the, that's the backstory on that one, and uh. So number ninety-five, that'll stay monthly, number ninety-six, cybersecurity, I think Wolf, you had maybe something you wanted to talk about that tonight?
Yeah, I'm trying to, um, I sent an email very brief, or shortly before the meeting, and I apologize for that, I. I just didn't remember to send it out. Um, to recap, for the new people. Um, sometime earlier in, in the year, very early in the year, there was a um. An announcement from a federal agency, and you and I talked about this offline, um, that uh. There's reason to believe that public water suppliers are gonna be increasingly targeted. In terms of cybersecurity, information security, and uh, physical security, right? And um, so I asked the question back then, and because I'm in that business. I rattled down a couple of questions that are really defined by, as you, as you probably know, ISO twenty-seven oh one. Uh, for the large, for the largest part, and um, a lot of these ends, these questions have been answered to a certain degree. A, from our IT service provider. B, from the business that did the controls equipment on the wells and tanks. Uh, some of these questions were great answers, some of them were not so great answers, and there's room. For us to discuss, do we need to respond to some of those answers that were not so great? Um, that summary that I emailed out earlier may explain a little bit why some of these questions, when I answered, some of these answers to my. Believe were not satisfactory, right? Um, and that doesn't make it a problem necessarily, it just means that we have room for improvement, right?
We do have our walkthrough scheduled for beginning of October, so that will also help us find. Some other weaknesses where we can improve.
And who does the walkthrough?
It's a company called um, Adam, A T O M Group. They are highly recommended by our insurance company with um. New Hampshire D E S, so they're kind of all intertwined with each other to make sure that particularly water places are. Up to date with their cybersecurity. So, our last meeting, I had revamped our cybersecurity policy with Primex. To bring it to a more higher level. Um, because with. The actors today, you just never know what they're gonna try, bringing it more of a, explaining who all the key players are. And then, that kind of being a policy at a very high level, and then coming up with, um. Procedure practices, I think that's what they call them too, okay, if it affected financial, this is what we did, if it affected the. Chlorine or the treatment chemicals, this is what we do, if it affected customer data, this is what we do. So, creating small procedures depending on what actually got affected. But not really part of your policy, because things will be changing constantly.
Right, so, can you just point me to those, so I can review them?
They, I'm still reading them.
Okay.
So.
Happy to help.
Okay.
It's my field.
I did, exactly, I think that is your IT, so.
Cybersecurity and policy, yeah.
The Primex one is the one that's generic template that they've put out.
Okay.
I think, I put it in the last one for you guys to get a general idea of.
At one point you did, I'm not sure if it was the last one. Like, one comment that I keep making is um, don't just think IT.
Oh, no.
We always say cybersecurity, this is, this is not just an IT issue, it's, it's, it's physical security as well, right? It's emergency response plans, business continuity, right, there's a lot of things. And, and just, when, when you go through the questionnaire, and the answers that I summarized that we received from the different contractors. You're actually gonna find that that's exactly um, showcasing how the IT guys are just looking at it from an IT standpoint. None of them really looks at this, for example, as far as the automation in the, in the wells and in the, in the tanks, you know, that's just not something.
Procedure practices, so.
And even Adam, I can promise you right now, they're not even gonna think about the fact that we have PLCs. Um, and, and, and VFTs in the building, it's just not something that an IT guy is ever gonna consider as, as a safety risk, because it's out there, so.
I actually did go and trading from one of them, and they did actually go over PLCs, and. A bunch of jargon that was way over my head concerning PLCs, so I'd love to. Pick your brain all out, but. Because they are intertwined with the insurance company who isn't, they want to make sure we are safe with all cybersecurity, not just IT. They are the ones that. Are kind of saying, hey, Adam Group, don't just focus on IT, um.
Yep.
And New Hampshire D E S is also, and this is what, so the three of them together. Are pulling it away from just IT.
Good, and we, we can be part of the walkthrough if we want to? Yeah, okay, once we get the date.
Interesting, yeah, yeah.
I forget, it's.
You don't have to, when you get it, go.
I'll email it out, but I'll also email you the high level, and. Um, as I said, I'm still working on the procedures, because literally I finished one, and they're like, oh, and I have to write these break. Because it's, it's ever-changing. Um, one of the main things that Primax said, which I mentioned in the last meeting, um, is that this is something we have to address. The meeting after the annual meeting every year, to want to update commissioners. Because it's all aimed at high level, and that high level policy is private, courtesy of, because we don't want to. Advertise what our plan is, um. And if anything's changed in the last, like, what have we done in the last year, I, I keep. Um. Given there's just fishing things, but I keep incident report. So the staff knows that every time they get a phishing email, they email me, this is who emailed me. They on the other end are blocking it, and I've, literally daily, and as I'm, and I've been doing it. For two months now, it went from, you know, kristen dot M A H E E R to. That's my email, so there, and it's scary to see the progression.
Okay, I just want to thank you, Wolf and Scott, for offering your, your services here, that's kind of where your area is, that's, that's. That's a good thing that you're offering that, that's great, and I, I definitely hope that I, they take you up on this and, and get expertise involved, so. That's good, I appreciate that. And uh, Kristen, I've, I think I've gotten several of the um, the, the fake spoof emails that. It seems like I get at least two or three a month, maybe, that come out, that they definitely look like they're.
If it's coming to your MVD one, then yes, please let me know.
Oh, you're alright, because I haven't on the last few of them, because they were coming so frequently, I was like, I'm not even gonna bother asking if Kristen, if, if this is the one that's.
They want to see every single one.
Alright, then I'll uh, I'll go back and, and let you know, say, hey, this looks fishing, right? All right, then I'll uh, I'll go back and, and let you know, say, hey, this looks fishing, right?
That's a good point though, most of those I perceive as being block five poking us to see how it responds.
And they very well could be.
Okay, so you, so you don't want us to make a distinction just whenever we see one and what, what do you want us to do with them? Because we don't want to forward them, right?
No, so what I've asked like, um, Shelley is, she sends me an email, I said, put suspicious in the. Text, but now she just puts S U S, and then she just puts. Who did you get it from? So that I can actually read. What it is, don't send me the attachment, just, just like. Who did the email come from? So that I can keep track of, because that's what I'm noticing, as I said, like, their names are very specific. And you wouldn't know, even if you hover over it anymore, it, that is the email now. I don't understand how they do that, but.
So I'm still not sure what we're supposed to.
So, in the email, if you hit reply or forward or whatever, you know how it comes up with. The information of who you got the email from, just copy and paste that into an email to me and then block delete.
But not the body of the email with any links that may be malicious or anything, just the header information of the email.
Who you got the email from, what was the subject line?
Are you just keeping track of that information, we're not looking into where it's coming from?
Not at this time.
Just curious as to what you're doing with the information.
It's what Primax.
What do they want?
Primax, and they may ask for this report at some time, but they've been asked, you need to keep a daily log of all cyber. Issues and phishing is number one.
Doesn't block five have a process that could maybe help us automate that and?
So, I mean, there's plugins and stuff for Outlook that you can use to just like report phishing and it'll automatically do everything that you need, I mean, usually like you could. Make the, the email, the phishing email on attachment and put that in email, say, here it is, then an I T person can take a look at it and make determination, but.
I'm going through you very inefficient and probably not su- super helpful, no, no, I'm sorry, that sounded weird. But then, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, if we just send you the header, it doesn't really clarify what the attack vector was. So I would inquire with.
Eighty-five percent go away when we move to Google. Totally soon, Block Five is still working on that, um. Because we, there's a lot behind the scenes, they've got to update prior to rolling anything out, but we have, we will be going to. It'll be M V V Water N H dot gov. Um. So I'm hoping they have a little harder time recreating those emails, or at least that's what the government tells me, but. But yes, Block Five can help with those more so. Other questions with cybersecurity?
All right, then uh, that was the last item on the actions items, so um, what do we want to do with number ninety-six for the. Uh, the next date on that instead of August, is that a comeback in September, more information?
It's the walkthrough.
I say October, that's, that's the walkthroughs, the beginning of October.
Okay.
Right, it sounds good, so number ninety-six, if uh, Dawn, if you want to change that last date to October, that would be good. Any new action items from tonight's meeting that we want to add at this point?
Yeah, we had earlier, reaching out to Penichak, right? So, reaching out to Penichak to inquire about uh, plans.
Treatment plans?
Right, plans to uh, ensure compliance of PFAS when the federal M C Ls are. Coming into effect.
Yeah, that sounds good, um. Do we want to ha- have something in there about asking uh, Underwood to uh, just further explain? Um, the chlorination, rechlorination um, questions that we had? I don't know, what do you feel?
I'll bring that up in a couple of months, let's not extend the meetings with exercise, it's in my head, so.
All right, so I guess we're good on action items? Okay, uh, so next we have is old business, anybody have any old business to present? Seeing none, um, yeah, the only, the only one I had was kind of left over from last month and I, I. I mentioned to Kristen about um, having the, the potential to put that cancer survey text link string. On either the customers' bills directly where, you know, where the area talks about um. Um. Water quality complaints, it's under, i- if you get the bill and look at it, which I usually don't, but my wife actually gave it to me to look at it because it's. Astronomical irrigation number on there, I got a little scolded for that, so um, that's for good reason.
Hey, I think it's working.
Irrigation switch off since then, so it's working. Um, but there's a thing right under here, it says M V D announcement and notices, and that's where the water quality uh, inquiries. Thing is mentioned, and I think right beneath that, if we can put another line item on that to just put the link of the cancer survey and say, you know. Uh, please reach out to the following link to complete an important cancer survey in the town of Merrimack. Sponsored by the D H H S and you can even put in parentheses, you know. Do not call M V D on this or something, because I know we don't wanna be speaking on behalf of the D H H S. Um, just to say, look, it's their cancer survey, if you're interested in wanting to know what it's about, call them. So it doesn't burden our staff, which I know we're trying not to do that. Uh, so I, I think um, Amy is supposed to kind of get back to us on that to see if we can do something like that.
I was gonna say, did you, have you talked to Amy on that, Dawn?
I haven't, I, I could, yeah, it might be easier if I just do that, um.
She was supposed to reply that and I.
She got no weeds on it from that.
Yeah, she got something else, so she obviously didn't get back to you.
And I don't want, I don't want her to take away stuff that's important that she's already working on, you know, that's why I'm not hounding her for any of this stuff, but. That's probably a good idea, is, is um, maybe what I can do is um, just reach out to her and say, hey, you know, give me a call on this and I can just. Explain to you what I'm looking to see if it can get done and if, if she's can figure out a way if it can be done or not, but. Um, so I'll, I'll do that, Ron, if you want to tell her that I'll be reaching out to her, that, that would be good.
I can do that.
All right, uh, so if there's no other new business, uh, looks like, I'm sorry, now we got new business, yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, I thought we were already in the new business, um. The way we use OneDrive is not the way it's intended to be. Uh, at least in my opinion, it's not, um, every time that um, you send the package, I have to dig for it. It's not in the shared documents, it's not in my documents, you know, it's, it's not in, in um. Um, I have to literally go to your account, Joe, and look at your shared documents, and I don't know if that's just from. Well, on the link, but if you just log into Office, right, um, dot com, in, in, um. Usually the way this is done, we have, is that you have like a basically department folders, right? Not personal folders that are being shared, but you're setting up um, organizational level folders. Um, that, that are not tied to a specific user, so you don't have to necessarily share them with anybody. But they're made available to basically specific roles of users, for example, commissioners or general users, and I don't know how Block Five set that up, but. That's how it's usually done, um, sharing from an individual shoulder, that, shoulder, folder. Let's say, for example, you were to leave the organization or switch roles and it's no longer you, or you delegate this to somebody else. Now it becomes a lot more tricky and difficult to, to, to make that available for future users because your account gets shut down. And you can't share it anymore, if it's department folder uh, on OneDrive slash SharePoint, then you don't have that issue. So I don't think the way we're doing this right now is correct, it's not a problem, but it's not correct. Yeah, Block Five should be, you know, should be able to, to help you with that, basically, they, and I don't know if you guys have been receiving the proper training with, with the switch to three sixty-five. Right?
I can, I can show her.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, for example, what kind of admin levels do you guys have individually, right? And I, I'm not sure what kind of role model Block Five has implemented, but say, for example, not everybody in the organization should be able to create departmental drives or. Not drives, I'm sorry, uh, folders, right? Um, so there should be a limited number of people uh, that have the ability to create a folder or even. You know, a team, really realistically, that, that, that allows us to, you know, to. To share these and they show up then on OneDrive as departmental folders, right? Again, the, the big, it's not really an issue if you know how to get there and if you just go by the link, it's not an issue either. But I tend to browse around in the data that we have because I want to look at past meetings, I want to look at other uh, files that have been shared. And discussed before, and now it becomes that we're jumping into different shared drives for different people. Instead of having a central location that everybody uses. And again, everything is tied to your personal account because it's your shared folder on your personal, not, actually on your personal slash. Individual.
Like B O C OneDrive account, so it will always be her folders that she shared.
No, and that's the issue, uh, it doesn't have to be a B O C account, there should be an admin that can create a departmental OneDrive folder.
That would be Block Five to create that.
Unless there's somebody here in the organization, right? And, and then, and that makes sense, and that's why she's doing it like that, and then, and again, I'm not saying it's necessarily wrong, but it's. It's not following the practice that usually businesses do, which means taking it away from individual accounts, that may change, right? Um, and, and, and again, if you want to delegate that to somebody else, right, um, for example, you couldn't really easily do it because it's all tied to your account. At the latest, at that moment, we have to create a department folder and shuffle everything over, and my preference is to do it rather early in, in the process and not wait until a problem occurs. Does it make sense?
I just click on the link, I'm not gonna lie.
Okay.
I'm just clicking on like, they give me a link, I have a link for password meetings, um, how it gets there is uh, not, it's above my pay grade as an engineer.
It's also from a policy perspective, access control, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, if, if there's a, a better way we should be doing it, then we could, you know, should look into doing that, I, I don't think it matters to. So right now, it's easy, you just, I just go to OneDrive and that's the page that opens for me, so it's easy for me, but I'm sure we can set it up, so. Whatever page that opens for the current information, if it's in a different place, we can find that too and download the, the packet and whatever else information that comes, so. You know, I think we should work on, on trying to get it right, that's uh, you know, the way to do it. Um, so I think I'm good with that, anybody else have any comments on that one? Any other uh, new business, I guess I should say? Uh, none, then I would, I, the only thing I was wondering is, uh, I think we had a press release set ready to be issued on the um. I call it the M D L, the multi-district litigation settlement, um, but I don't know if, now that it's public information. Is that something we want to hold off on or, I, I don't remember if uh. I don't know if it's really necessary at this point, um, especially in light of the discussions about an award coming, but.
Yeah, maybe, I, I maybe we should keep our mouth shut until they um, do that, because I know at the last town council meeting. B and C Murphy made a very big public statement about it, basically saying the same thing that, you know. That the state of New Hampshire was going after it and that we were the only state in the country doing it this way and. Um, that's Merrimack's money and we deserve it, um, and then I know Loreen put out a big statement on Facebook that. Made the round, so I, I maybe I just maybe think we should zip our mouths and not aggravate anybody and see. If we actually, because I was super excited to hear that we might actually get money on this, I thought this was gonna go to all the municipalities who haven't put the systems in yet. Um, so.
I think we might be surprised in a positive way from what I'm hearing, so.
So, yeah, maybe.
I would probably, I would probably wait.
Yeah.
If we actually get an amount.
I mean, it's a catch twenty-two, we don't know that this is happening because maybe some people have mentioned that there's concern, so. Could go either way too, you know?
Right.
Little bit of pressure and now they're trying to relieve the pressure on themselves, so. There's two ways to look at it, but, yeah, I just bring it up and uh, I kind of tend to agree, we'll just let it float right now and if. Hopefully things will go our way and uh, I guess we'll sit back and wait and hope. Um, any other uh, new business from anyone? If not, we can move on to superintendent report.
I just have one thing, um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a uh. Don Tomo, Tamalia approached me about talking to the New Hampshire Lower Merrimack Valley Stormwater Coalition Group. About uh, kind of giving a salt talk, we're gonna do it at the uh, two and nine treatment plant. Um, trying to get some more communities to join the uh, Green Snow Pearl program. And uh, I thought it'd be a good idea to do it at a treatment plant, it's just like two and nine, where we, you know. She was asking if I. Talked to the group originally, it was gonna be Zoom, I said, you know, maybe we could do it at the treatment plant because. It all came about when we were actually looking to include PFAS treatment that. We were starting looking at well three and the sodium chloride levels are so high that we. Didn't know if we wanted to treat those wells because of that, and so it kind of gives them the big picture of the, you know. Sodium chloride, you know, as well as the uh, PFAS treatment, so. Got that coming up on October tenth, two and nine.
Good, that's good. Think I might like to attend that if I'm free.
Is there, they, what is it called, the green?
Green Snow Pro.
What it, what I, what it, I mean, it's a kind of going with the salt reduction that we've been doing.
So basically, it's. Each is like contractors calibration, uh, proper uh, application rates and. That kind of, that kind of thing uh, with uh, salt, salt reduction as well.
Okay, so it kind of goes along with. Dawn's been pushing.
Yeah, and if your greens are certified, then you, you let your liability insurance.
The liability protection is a, is a big one, that's very, um, that's why a lot of the property managers and property owners. Would want to get involved with that because there's some offers them liability protection for slips and falls and things like that, so. But that would be a good message to get out, that's a good thing, Ron, I think that's a good idea for, for Dawn to include us. I think she knows that we've been really looking at this, you know, pretty strongly for three years now, so.
Yeah.
It's also in the town site plan regulations, I believe, that um, for new development, they have to be. Um, they can't use salt on new developments and there's stuff about the green snow qualification as well.
That's any appropriate protection zones, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And quick comment, that would be Dawn from D P W, Merrimack D P W.
Yes.
Not everybody knows that.
Yes.
Call Corks Director.
Well, yeah, I promise.
Don Tomala.
Small is a, yeah.
Is how I believe you say it. Don't put me on it though, I just watch a lot of me.
Dante.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ron?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay.
Quick comment, I'm gonna send you guys a quick email for Block Five, so I'm clearer as to what my concern is, okay? So you don't have to go by what we just said earlier.
Okay. All right, uh, so I guess that's it for um, discussion items, I guess uh, at this point, we're just looking for any questions from the press and public. I assume there's nobody in the room from the press or public, so if you could look online and see if there's anybody else but me and M T V on, on the line.
There is no.
All right, so if that's uh, if that's it, anybody have any closing comments or anything, if not, I'll uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
All right, motion by Wolf, second by. All right, motion by Wolf, second by Scott. Who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I'm in favor as well, so that's five zero zero. So our next meeting is September sixteenth. And uh, we'll see you there, Merrimack. Thanks very much.